I mean, like, you should promise when they were together and if I bought, be keeping in mind. Do anything.
You should never lose when you score forty-one points or forty-two, whatever it was.
Yeah. Well, I'm just glad somebody finally. Seems to drag on. Did you watch that game? Oh, you did?
I've been on the other end of those things way too many times not to appreciate that one.
I mean, like, make sure you don't punch you in the mouth if we start taking them off there. You know? Well, I mean, like, so, they had a good one. And so did Utah. I was shocked that they beat Stanford, really. Because normally I root for Utah in that case. But I have nephew that plays for Stanford, so.
You always have to go back.
Which is funny, because his dad was linebacker from BYU. But he got a full ride to Stanford, so, I mean. Did you take a full ride to BYU or Stanford?
I'd crush my kid if he turned that down.
Yeah. Well, that was the thing that they always emphasize, is like, you know, school.
You get that kind of education.
Yeah, and so he gets, he gets a degree from Stanford. You can't beat that. That's funny, the one I was reading about. Because I went to, I saw, I clicked on, like, uh, like, Stanford, so it was in the local paper, so I wanted to read from the locals' perspective. And like, the, one of the few names that they mentioned was, it's like, oh, yeah, it's turning linebacker. He breathed, missed getting a sack, and then he threw like fifty-seven yard touchdown, like he sidestepped and missed it. Quarterback is like, yeah, there's, there's my nephew.
I will see how well I can remember your names with no tags.
We're in, uh, in disguise or incognito.
That's what happens when you wait till after five, when everybody's gone, to come and set up.
Is there a next one on the twenty-third?
Of this month? No.
Won't be till next month.
Do what?
It won't be till next month, then?
The next meeting?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty-first, okay.
Yeah, we won't have a work session. Well, that gets slower and slower, doesn't it?
Well, I have everything six, except for that clock.
Okay. Okay, this is the time set for the planning commission from Roy City for October the ninth, two thousand and eighteen. Will people in the audience please rise and join us in the pledge of allegiance? Commissioner Bills is going to lead us.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Item number one, do any of the commissioners have a declaration of a conflict for anything that is on the agenda tonight? There being none, we will go to item number two. Item number two is a public hearing to consider a request to amend the following maps for the property located at approximately forty-nine seventy-one through fifty-four oh-three, south thirty-two hundred west. It is on the agenda for the general plan, future land use map from medium to density, single-family residence to low-density, single-family residence. And item B, it's on to change the zoning map from R-one-eight, single-family residential to RE-twenty residential estates.
Chair one, correction, it should read forty-nine seventy-one to fifty forty-three, south.
Five zero four three?
Correct.
The record will reflect five zero four three. Thank you. As the proponent, come on up. State your name and tell us what your address is, please.
My name is Steve Smith. I live at forty-nine seventy-one, south thirty-two hundred west in Roy. I recently just purchased this property. It has three-quarters of an acre. And when we moved in, we wanted something that was somewhat of a rural feel. We've been living in a, in a sub, in an older subdivision in Roy with a very small lot. And we noticed farm animals in the area and so forth. And we would, uh, would like to have some farm animals and also the room to place them. As a R-one-eight right now, that property and any other property is limited to the size of the auxiliary buildings to one thousand two hundred and fifty square feet. The, uh, changing it to an RE-twenty would allow a percentage of the total land area. Now, what I am envisioning, I have a lean-to and a garden shed, which, between them, take up about nine hundred square feet, so I'm kind of limited as to, like, putting a shop for, I am a tinkerer, I guess you'd say, I have a lathe and wood shop and, and things like that. Fix the neighbors' cars, that type of thing. Just not as a business, but, uh, anyway, so we have, uh, we looked at the, uh, the map and the property just to the north of us, even though it's still R-one-eight, was actually a goat dairy until two years ago, when the husband had a stroke and they were no longer to keep the dairy. And then the property directly north of that, still on thirty-two hundred, but bisected right now by the bacon property, is RE-twenty, both sides of the street, all the way up to the next intersection. They are property, they are approximately the same size as five of the six properties that were in discussion. Mine's the largest, at three-quarters of an acre, but the rest of them are at least half an acre. The other thing that kind of makes this a little different from a typical R-one-eight is that it backs on the, uh, Rocky Mountain Power corridor, which, uh, takes over part of the, uh, part of its easement on our property and on the other, uh, landowner's property, and then part of it's owned by RMP themselves. They leased this property out, and if you were to drive down in that area, you would see that there are horses and cows and other things that are in this property, as well as this property to the north of us, which I'm assuming is the case because they were grandfathered. Now, when I read the Roy City code, it said that when you set a subdivision, you should not have different zoning. Should have just one type of zoning, and I'm assuming that's why this went R-one-eight, because most of the homes are smaller. The plots are smaller and so forth. However, in, in keeping with the general character of that area, specifically those properties with the open field behind them, which you cannot be built on, and even parts of the field to the north, which will not be able to be built under the power lines, they can, I know the future plan shows that to become, uh, everything to become R-one-eight. They still are going to have that issue of that property in the back and room for animals or, or whatever. So what we would like, and what we are petitioning for, is to change the property to an RE-twenty, which would be similar to the property to the north, and which would allow addition of some farm animals, there are restrictions on that, even, even so. But primarily to give us the means and other property owners to build adequate places to house the animals. They have, a lot of them are out in open pastures with no shelters and that. And, uh, so we're, we're kind of a twofold purpose here. Be able to keep it rural as it is now, and to be able to have a place to adequately house those and to put a, a shop, a, you know, a detached garage, if you will. You know, as, as the land permits. Now, I've talk, talked with Rocky Mountain Power. There are actually two sets of lines going through the easement. The lines that are to the eastmost, which actually border the back fence of my, uh, yard. There are a number of buildings already built underneath them. And speaking with Harold Dudley at Rocky Mountain Power, he said they would not oppose putting a building under those lines, but they would not permit anyone to be under the higher lines that are to the west. We have looked at it, and we can actually put a building in between the lines so that they're not physically under any lines, which is, uh, you know, one of our intents, as, you know, as, uh, you know, as time goes on. So, that is the basis of our, uh, our request, and I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions from the members of the commission?
You said there's already animals on there?
There are animals on the property in there, there are some, uh, we have some animals. Some of the other people have animals, but they're quartering them actually in the Rocky Mountain leased areas. The people, the Thurmans, which is on that large tract of property, have family members that have some cattle that are running both in the pasture to the north of us and the Rocky Mountain Power leased property to the west of us. We don't want cattle. That's, I mean, it's more, much more than our, uh, property would, would withstand. We do currently have a, a couple of goats, uh, and that's primarily because we have family members that can't drink cow's milk. And goats' milk, if you buy it, it's twelve bucks a gallon, so. This is just a way, and a way to teach, I have a couple of grandsons that are, uh, give them a chance to learn chores and some responsibility in that.
Are there, uh, the other property owners, do you know what type of animals they're going to put on there, would like to, or what they already have?
The horses is the primary thing that they would like to have, and there are mainly, and most of them have, I won't say most of them, several of them have horses there in that area. Some of them would like, uh, have some chickens, which is permitted under R-one-eight, we have some chickens as well. I've not heard of any plans to put anything other than those types of animals there. In other words, uh, cattle raising, I mean, I, you know, cattle take, take a lot of feed and then probably, you know, would overwhelm that. This is also, uh, to have some livestock, there's actually a benefit, though, because it helps keep the weeds and the, and the, uh, and the grass, uh, down, so we don't have, you know, it reduces the fire hazard along that lane. And it's just nice to have a little bit of country right there, too. That's one of the things that really appealed to us about moving here, we were enlightened for twenty-four years, and so far, we've been very excited about living here, and, and we hope that we can make this work.
Any other questions from any, anyone else? Mr. Parkinson?
Well, as mentioned, this is a request to rezone, um, several parcels, as outlined in, in the aerial over here. Future land use map calls it to be medium-density, single-family residential, uh, which is currently zoned. Same with the zoning map, as you see on, on the overhead, is to have it R-one-eight. As you mentioned, the property is not directly to the north, but a little farther up. If you look at the map to the right, um, the dark green is RE-twenty, so you see it's in the neighborhood. One property to the north, and then across on thirty-one hundred west, on the east side of thirty-one hundred west, it's zoned RE-twenty. So it's not out of the, you know, blue, just all sudden bring it in. The only reason why the property between this request and those to the north is he's thinking future development, that's why he doesn't want it to be zoned. He's got grandfathering rights already for animals, so to him, it doesn't matter. He's just thinking future, so he wants to keep it R-one-eight. Staff has never had a request to go down in size of zoning rather than it's usually multifamily or, or higher density, so that's why you did not see a, a recommendation from me. Really comes down to what you guys' or thoughts are on the, the future land use map. If you think it's, it's good in the area, then make that recommendation, and then zoning should, should go forward. At the council meeting, I will then make a recommendation following your suit. So again, since it's something new, usually it's, you know, going up rather than down. You know, I don't think the councils can have issues with, you know, having a little more properties that are larger in size and allowing for farm animals. The animals that would be allowed are only those that would be in the zoning ordinance already anyway, within the RE-twenty zone. So they'd have to maintain, uh, those type of animals. So normally, here's where I'd give you a recommendation, but any questions?
That's, that's a legitimate explanation, it's a case of first impression, and, uh, you don't know what our impression is.
Yeah, so any questions?
Any questions from anyone? No?
There not any violations now for having animals on there, are there?
I'm not going to say yes or no. I, I don't know the history of these parcels, I don't know what was there before, I don't know what the grandfathering rights they have.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Thank you.
Is there anyone here that?
Get open it first.
Get open.
I'm sorry. I don't know why I forget that. Okay. I'm, I will accept the motion to open the public meeting.
So moved.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting is now open, and so now we will listen to anybody who would like to speak on this matter for any reason. If you support it, you want to come tell us you support it, or if you're against it, you want to come and tell us you're against it, come and let us know.
Hello, my name is also Stephen Smith, this is my father.
So let me think. Go ahead.
I want to speak in support of the proposal. We bought this property intending to remodel the basement and, and move both our families there. I have a wife and two young boys who just love the rural, uh, nature of the area. They love being able to see the horses in the neighboring pastures and the cows that the neighbors to the north of us have. And they'd really like to be able to have some, you know, 4H-type activities when they get older. And, you know, it is a little unusual, I guess, to go to a lower-density zoning, but I think the, the feel and the nature of the area is very much already kind of like a, a residential or a rural estate. The lots are big enough to support it. There's really no way that we could put more homes on those particular lots with the easements and the power lines. So I think we're just trying to preserve what we already have out there and allow us to have a shop so we can do some woodworking and things like that.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Anyone else would like to speak before we, uh, vote? There being no one? I would entertain a motion, this will be two motions, will be motion as to a.
Motion to close first.
Got to close first.
Always.
Make a motion, we go out of public hearing?
A second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Now we will, I will accept a motion as to item two A. Anybody want to make a motion?
Due to the, uh, you know, we are supposed to make best use of the, of land. And due to the unique nature of the location of this area, I couldn't think of a better use. So personally, I'm going to support that, so I'll make a motion that we approve the, oh, I've got to find the wording here, exactly here. Okay, that we approve, approve the general plan, future land use map from medium-density, single-family residential to low-density, single-family residential.
I'll second that.
Roll call?
Yes.
Commissioner Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Spar?
Aye.
Commissioner Brand?
Aye.
Commissioner Karas?
Aye.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Commissioner Bills?
Aye.
Commissioner Calley?
Aye.
Okay, motion passes. Uh, we'll move on to item two B, and I will accept a, um, motion regarding that item.
I move that we change the zoning map from R-one-eight, single-family residential, to R-two, RE-twenty residential for the area described in the notes. I'll second that.
There's a second? Okay.
Commissioner Payne?
Aye.
Commissioner Brand?
Aye.
Commissioner Collins?
Aye.
Commissioner Calley?
Aye.
Commissioner Spar?
Aye.
Commissioner Karas?
Aye.
Commissioner Bills?
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Uh, this item will be on the city council meeting next week. I didn't want you to wait another month and a half to get to it, because they won't have a meeting the first of November due to elections.
Yeah, we, we recommended the council, and they are the ones that actually say you can do it or not, so go say hello to them. Okay. Item number three is also a public hearing. This is to consider a request for a preliminary subdivision approval of Midland Farms, phase number seven subdivision located approximately twenty-nine hundred west and forty-two hundred south. Is the proponent of this item present? Come on up, please. Please state your name and give us your address.
Richard B. Jorgensen, forty-two forty-eight, south, twenty-nine hundred west.
Is there anything you would like us to know about this? Other than you would like it to be done?
The only, uh, the only thing I have to say is that, that we've, uh, we are trying to, uh, fulfill all of the items, uh, that were, uh, noted on this, uh, engineering study. And I think we've complied with them, uh, with, uh, the map. You received the map from, uh, Andy from Great Basin, is that correct?
And I'm new and improved, or the one that's in the packet?
New and improved.
No. But again, we're just looking to condition, you know, approve a condition on the DRC comments being satisfied. You don't have to have it all done tonight.
Well, uh, to my knowledge, we have satisfied all of those requirements with the, with the information that I gave you this evening. With that, I don't have anything other to, other than that to say, other than I would appreciate a speedy movement on this to, uh, so we can get it started. Thank you.
Thank you, sir, thank you. Any questions from any of the commissioners?
I just have a question, I'm looking at the, uh, paperwork, I guess, when this came out back in September. It just said that Stormwater Division land drain strongly recommended through subdivision.
I live right on the edge of that subdivision. The proposed subdivision at forty-two forty-eight, south, twenty-nine hundred west. We developed the property down, uh, below me on twenty-nine hundred west that runs into Midland Drive. We developed the lots, uh, ten lots on, on Midland. We had to change the, uh, the, the, uh, storm drain, they required us to put in a, a larger storm drain on, on Midland Drive than was there. Our home is, and the homes on twenty-nine hundred, uh, that I'm aware of, all are on land drains. They're on, uh, storm drain system. The, the storm drain system is above us on, on, uh, forty-two hundred, which is the, uh, east side of the property. And that all comes down into the retention basin, which is on Midland Drive just above the proposed subdivision. So there will be, uh, storm sewer drains on, on all the property.
Anybody else have any other questions? If not, thank you, and I will open the public hea, I'm, I'll ask for Steve's comments first. I'll get there.
As mentioned, this is a request to subdivide, um, land, about two-point-six-five acres. The property in the outline was recently rezoned, um, from RE-twenty to R-one-seven in order to allow for a subdivision to occur. The property itself, in essence, can meet and shouldn't be able to meet all aspects of the, of the subdivision ordinance. Um, the, the comments within the DRC are just things in order to get it approved through all, all code, whether it be fire, public works, zoning, um, or building. So we're not looking for them to be completed by tonight, it's more of approval condition on the DRC comments being satisfied. If that takes a week, if it takes a month, it's really up to the developer once that is, is approval. So staff would recommend approval with the conditions as stated in the staff report.
Now I'll open a public meeting. I will have a motion, entertain a motion to open a public meeting.
So we will move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Is there anyone here, uh, besides, uh, Mr. Jorgensen, that wants to tell us anything about this matter? For or against? There being no response, I'm going to close the public meeting.
I move that we, move that we go out of public hearing.
Okay.
I'll second that.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Meeting's closed. I will now accept a, um, motion regarding item number three on tonight's agenda.
And again, this is a, a recommendation, council still has the authority to approve it.
You understand that, right, Mr. Jorgensen? That what we, what we're doing tonight is we're recommending approval conditioned on what the staff report says, that you comply with the DRC and all of those things. We don't have the final say.
City council.
The city council has the final say. Okay. Just so the record's correct. Then I will accept a motion.
I recommend that we approve the primary subdivision on Maryland Farms, phase seven subdivision located at approximately twenty-nine hundred west, forty-two hundred south, based on the findings in the DRC.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
No?
It's not an ordinance change, so.
Just a yea or nay.
Okay. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none? We were recommended to the council that they approve this. Okay, item number four is also a public hearing. This is to consider a request for a preliminary subdivision approval of Tygard, Phase Two Commercial Subdivision located at approximately twenty-nine fifty west and forty, I'm sorry, twenty-nine fifty west and forty-six hundred south. Is the proponent of this matter present?
Hi.
All right, commissioner, our commissioners, appreciate your time tonight.
My name is Robert Fuller, I'm a representative for Tygard LC, who is developing that. My address is ten ninety north, fifty-nine hundred east in Eden is my office. east in Eden is my office. So that parcel right there, I think it already has the road going across that waiting to be paved, and it's a simple three-lot subdivision that includes the little existing house on the east side. And that is the second best use of that land that I can think of, so that's why it's that way. So that's all. Unless you have any questions.
Are there any questions from any of the commissioners? No, then thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Mr. Parkinson?
Yes, you may or may not remember, Phase One was, was before you, six, eight months ago, which is, it was six lots, four above where Phase Two is, and then two lots off of thirty-one hundred west. During the pre-construction meeting, it was discussed, you know, because he was going to have a road that was going to dead end, he'd have to do a temporary turnaround, install a fire hydrant at the end there. He already had, I want to say sewer, pipe to forty-six hundred south from the north. He just had to install a few more things. So at the pre-construction, it was decided, just go ahead and pipe everything, so he doesn't have to do it again. And then he came in with, with Phase Two, just to kind of finish off the east side of that road, to subdivide the land off. So this, in this case, it's a lot simpler than Phase One. We really won't have a pre-construction meeting because it's already been done. The road will be paved here shortly, so he's just looking to, to subdivide off three parcels. Like he, he mentioned, Lot Eight already has an existing home on it, and then Seven and Nine would have the ability to build on. So staff would recommend approval of the Phase Two of the subdivision with conditions as mentioned in the staff report.
Then I will accept a motion for open a public meeting.
Unless you have questions.
So that wood house is stained?
Yes.
Okay, I move we go into public hearing.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, we are now open for a public meeting. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak on this matter? If so, please come forward, state your name and your address. There being no one, I'll accept a motion to close the public meeting.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
That's closed. Thank you. Not me. Okay, we'll move to item number five.
Should we make a motion to approve the?
He distracted.
It were my phone.
It were your phone that did so. Then we need a motion to
Recommend.
Recommend. Item number four, is there a motion?
I'll make a motion that we approve the preliminary approval of Tygard Phase Two subdivision.
Is that a recommendation to approve?
A recommendation to approve, with the conditions placed on it by the DRC.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none. And without another phone call, we will move to item number five.
That was just a reminder.
Oh, okay, a reminder that I didn't, yeah, remember. Okay. Item number five is to consider a request for a site plan and architectural approval for Harmon's Fuel Center located at approximately fifty-three seventy south and nineteen hundred west. Is the proponent for this matter present?
Hello, I'm Kristin Boros. I'm with Design Sequence. I'm here as a representative for Harmon's. So this project came before you, I believe, two years ago, and then the project, for various reasons, got put on hold, but Harmon's is ready to move forward. So our approval had expired, so we're looking to get new approval.
Any questions from commissioners, and particularly those that were here two years ago? Being none?
Only three of you.
Steve?
As you mentioned, this is, again, a request for site plan and architectural approval for a fuel center within the Harmon's parking lot, as identified in this aerial. They did come back and received approval November of two thousand sixteen. It wasn't until the, the building contractor came to get building permits that we informed him that your approvals have expired, you'll need to come back to the planning commission. Kristin unfortunately was the one that got beat up about it. But not, I mean, nothing's really changed from the, the previous approval. They have modified a little bit the site plan from the, the DRC comments back in two thousand sixteen to kind of help do that. The, the elevation of the, the fuel center is just a typical canopy. You know, it's not much you can do about that architecturally to make it look spectacular, you know, other than false walls and stuff like that, which really, really cost prohibitive. So staff, again, would recommend approval of the fuel center with the conditions as outlined in the staff report.
Then I would accept a motion to, as to item number five.
Or do you have any questions before that?
Are there any questions? Sorry, I can't have the record. There being none.
I, I do have one.
Oh, okay.
And maybe it's more of a comment than a question. And I'm not opposed to putting in a fuel station there. But if we look at Focus Roy and things like that, you know, one of the things that it does talk about is how we do tend to have an excess of parking around some of the existing businesses and things like that. And I just wonder if there isn't something that might be a better use for that spot, because once you put that in, that kind of finishes out that parking lot to where nothing else could be, could be put in there. And I just wonder if there isn't something that may have a little bit better use than the fuel station. Again, not being opposed to this.
Well, the, the good and the bad is, when the Focus Roy was adopted, it's just, again, a, a general concept. Until ordinances are written and the zone is changed, the existing zoning and uses continue to prevail. So right now, even though Focus Roy comments that how to build, you know, it should be up towards the street, should have pedestrian walkways and what have you, no ordinance has been written for that. So right now, it's just the, the regional commercial zone. This is one of those uses that is permitted within the zone, so there's nothing the city can do to, to halt that. If we could, we would definitely try, but with no legal ability, the existing zoning prevails until we can get the, the zone changed. But again, like you mentioned, everything that is existing at that time continues to exist. On the, on the side note, Harmon's does have within their agreement that no buildings would be within this anyway. So you couldn't, we wouldn't have any buildings anyway, because they don't want to be blocked beyond the buildings that already exist. So if they put their own building to block them, that's up to them. But no other buildings would be proposed.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? If not, then I will accept a motion.
This is two motions, correct?
Yeah, for architectural and for site plan.
I will accept the motion for the site plan as to item number five.
I move that we approve the site plan review with the conditions as stated in the staff report.
Is there a second for that motion?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. There being none. We will have a second motion here under this request, and that would be for the architectural approval of the Harmon's Fuel Center located at approximately fifty-three seventy south and nineteen hundred west. Do I have a motion in regards to that?
I recommend we approve the architectural review with the conditions as stated in the staff report.
Is there a second for that?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? There being none, we will recommend approval.
If she's not recommending, it's just been approved.
We done it.
Oh, yes, okay. It doesn't go anywhere. Item number six. Consider a request for site plan and architectural approval for Burrito Grande located at approximately five-five-one-one south, thirty-five hundred west. Is the proponent here?
Hi, my name is Carlos Soto. I own the Mexican restaurant down below in twenty-five hundred west. And I do want to make some changes in that property, especially with the car wash behind the restaurant. It's been sitting there for a long time since I purchased for the previous owner the old farm market, old farm, whatever they call the store, gas station. And since then, you know, I take it over, I make a restaurant in the front. But that kind of building has been, not in my business, not something I know how to do, it's not something too hard to run, but I have too many troubles with burglary. People breaking into those machines, taking the money, and so get to the point that was worthless for me to spend three times to repair all the damage the cows. And that building, I used to live and sit for a long while. And now I'm like to enclose the buildings, you know, actually, we got several other car washes in Midland Drive, which is hard to compete with this new business, big ones with all kind of free vacuum and fancy stuff around. So three little bays is not, is not going to make any difference. So for me, I decided to close the base, and I like to have a, like, fence link all the way around, and probably keep all my personal restaurant supplies or extras in the storage units. And also, they give me more parking lots for me, you know, because I want to redo my parking lot and remove the shingles, the wood shingles, which is something I, I want to do it too also, and just make it look nicer. Take it over the place, get, get the nice landscaping and re-assold the whole parking lot and have a little, my patio half covered, the other half uncovered with some nice timbers. So I'm looking to get a little corner better looking to where it is right now. And obviously, I had a couple reports with the city about some kind of activities, like drugs activities in the neighborhood, and I don't know how you call those things, what people use for, use drugs and things like that. And that was a kind of mess. So that's what I, I enclosed those bays and, and repainted and make it look as nicer. And I think with the, after I cleaned them out, that kind of stuff, and have cameras, now with a little tip, we're watching you and whatever, you know, it's been, it's been better for us.
Good.
It's been better for us to keep the area nice and clean. So we would like to move any kind of bad activity in that piece of property. And like I said, I used to have my parking, my truck, like, my snowplow, my snowplow truck, parking one of the bays. One day I came over and half of the wire was all removed, and, I mean, caused more money for me to take it to the shop and repair. So now if I get all the chingling around against the fence with the, against the market, I'd be all changed and linked and put all my equipment over there, you know, my, my stuff like this, and just keep my house, you know, nice and, and clean. So.
Do any of the commissioners have a question or a comment? Mr. Parkinson?
As Mr. Soto had mentioned, his request is to update the, the site plan and also kind of modify, modify, modify the exterior of the building. So on the screen right now is kind of the exit, the proposed, well, not the existing site plan. You kind of see where the parking stalls are. There's some in front of the building along thirty-five hundred west, some behind it, and then some to the north along fifty-five hundred south. Then you got, you can see the former car wash. His proposed site plan is, again, to leave the same stalls that are there, but then also put some on the east side of the car wash, basically adding to his ability to, you know, bring more people in, so to speak. His proposal is to put a fence around it, which isn't against ordinance of any sort. The unfortunate part is, DRC hasn't had a chance to review this. It was turned in so quickly, and we haven't had any responses back, but there won't be a whole lot, nothing from engineering, because they're not changing the topography of the, the asphalt building. We'll probably have just some, but it's more towards how they're going to build it and enclose the buildings. So it really will just come down to, to planning, so I can get those to you. But again, my recommendations will be, according to DRC comments, you know, if they're not in the staff report, it'll still continue. As for the building itself, this is kind of how it exists now. The picture on the top is of the north side of the building, kind of a, an outdoor eating space, doesn't have any coverings to it. It's already got stucco and, and rock, kind of a wainscote of rock along there. And then the southern one is more of the western facade that fronts on to thirty-five hundred west. The proposed, so the top one is what would, how it'd look on thirty-five hundred west. He'd still have the same archways that you see there now, but the middle one where the entry door is, would extend out, put a gable roof on it, and instead of coming into it straight, you'd come in from the sides, from north and south of that. So it does add a little bit of character. Then he putting some, some dormer windows in there on the roof, again, to add more character. You can see on your side, it'd be this way, kind of the extending the, the roof line over the patio. The bottom picture is the northern facade or elevation. You'll just kind of see some more gables coming in here to give it a little more character. So if you look at the existing, and then kind of see what the, the proposed is, you know, it's going to make it look a lot better than an existing now, gives a little more character. He'll have a, a wood trellis, so the whole patio won't be covered, it'll kind of be half and half. You'll have some, you know, what the trellis will give you some shade, but not, you know, a lot. But again, it's a lot better than the existing now. As for the existing car wash, I was able to find pictures before it was enclosed. He's enclosed it already, unfortunately. So he's coming to you to get approval, to already do what he's done. Anyway, so this is kind of what it'll look like.
Sorry, my Latino things, I don't even, I don't even realize I had two things like this. And I said, well, you know, it's nothing changed with the structure, I just enclosed the building, and he just shoot my button and say, Carlos, just get all these things done, and then you do things.
So you can see on the upper picture, over by where the truck is, you've already got kind of a, an enclosure done. And then on the back side, the western, it's just kind of a blank wall where that is. So what he's done is just taken those two bays and just mimicked the garage door style, kind of the, the arch that goes over it, stocked over the brick, again, to make it look more like the, the main business. So the backside, again, just kind of fully enclosed it. I just kind of went around, so you can kind of get a better idea of how it is. So it's not that he hasn't really tried to incorporate what the main building has, you know, especially with the arcs and how, arches, and how it goes around, accompanying the stucco, even the color. So when you look at the existing restaurant, it doesn't look out of character. So even though I lightly chewed on him for, for doing it, it, it's not inappropriate. So I think he, he went into it knowing what he wanted to do to, to mimic, even though he didn't know the ordinance requires it to look very similar and have similar colors and, and features. He's, he's done the things that he, he needed to do. So staff would just recommend approval both of the, the proposed site plan and the proposed exterior finishes to the, the main building and to those of the, the old car wash, with the conditions as mentioned in the staff report. Any questions?
Anybody? No questions?
Thank you.
So you can bring that down.
I think it looks nice.
Especially with the winter time, you know, when you open the door, the wind hits the door, and it's all the cold weather goes inside really quick. And I think with this kind of double door and give a little more, better, nice, warm space for people to come over and eat. And like I said, I think the whole deal is try to change the whole corner and make it a lot nicer.
But as somebody who lives very close to this, I, I say thank you. I think it looks, I think it looks great. And what you did with the car wash, yes, it should have been done in a different order, but it definitely is an improvement for that neighborhood, so.
Well, like I said, the car wash wasn't, I never buy that property because I want to do a car wash. I buy the property because I'm in the food business, you know, that was part of, part of the property. And I tried to run the car wash. It's, like I said, it's not really hard to run. It's, it's hard to keep that up. People come over and take what, it's not belong to them. People come over and take what, it's not belong to them, you know. Keep breaking those machines, and I said, you know, I'm done with this. So, I let it sit for a long while.
Okay.
And I'm looking to my building, it's like, you know what, I don't like this. It's like stuck in the nasty. So, that's why I framed it, and I got pictures, he still already got it. You know, we framed the way they should be, you know, those walls and cover and get the nice garage doors. So, make it look nicer, so it's not like something, a Mickey Mouse, it's something nice.
And Steve, I did see in there that it could not be rented out to other people on the, as far as the storage shed.
Correct, because...
It's not my intention to rent them out.
Self-awarehouse.
And I'm not worried about you, it's just whoever comes in after.
Yeah, self-awarehousing is not allowed in that zone, so it would just be part of the business, the restaurant.
It's part of his business.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
And it helps by putting a fence around it, you're not going to, you know, start renting it out. It's only got one side.
Especially right now with the, especially right now with how it is. It looks like a little alley between the Ken's Market and the car wash. So, it's easy to be, was done, trash. I have a junk, they got it to the city, come over and pick them up. I come over to the police and give you two reports to come and get the junk, if somebody live in that area. They don't did anything until the last time I got to make a writing letter, and I give it to the police chief officer, Roy, and say, this is the last letter I give it to you guys before I go somewhere else, because nobody's do anything with this car, with this automobile parts or whatever is over here. And I tried to take it to the dump, and they said, well, you got to bring some papers or whatever. So, it's not even mine, so what I would need to do? So, that's what I called to the city police and let them know of my concern. And I guess Ken's Market did the same thing, and 24 hours later, that was gone. So, that's what I want to get the chain link, so that way they can cover the area, be a little more private, so nobody can throw things in between those two properties. And that's the only reason I'd really love to have a chain link.
Sounds good.
Thank you.
Thank you. There are two motions that are required for item number six. There's a motion regarding the site plan. I will entertain that at this time.
I make a motion that we approve the site plan for Burrito Grande.
Is there a second?
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none? Then I need a second motion for the architectural approval for the Burrito Grande located at approximately 511 South and 3500 West.
I'll make a motion that we approve the architectural plan for Burrito Grande with the conditions in the staff report.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. We were recommended.
All right, thank you. See you, Steve.
See you.
Thank you very much. Okay, item number seven is the commissioners. Does anyone have a few seconds, if you don't have a whole minute? Nothing?
I did have a question about the last zoning, rezoning that we did with the businesses that were close to the water tower off of...
4000.
The addresses.
Oh, I know where you, yeah.
Yeah.
Or 5175.
Yeah, when we were annexing in properties over by the big main water tower. The muffler shop.
Okay.
And whatnot.
Oh, okay, over by that one.
I just wanted to know if any of the, because I know some of the other people were here, and they had to go speak with the attorney afterwards to make sure their, the zoning was going to be okay for their...
I have a meeting with those two gentlemen, Todd Porter and Ed Weakland, tomorrow to kind of go over what their future plans are with their sites and make sure that the light manufacturing accomplishes that.
Okay. I was worried about that, I didn't know that there was other businesses in that location.
Well, there are some south of Mr. Weakland's property, but they're already annexed and, are already part of Roy City, so... I know Ms. Weakland had concerns with them, but they're not part of the annexation, so they're already in Roy.
Okay.
Anybody else? We'll move on to item number eight. Mr. Parkinson, you want to give us a staff update?
Just to update you on the ordinance that's to be written in the general plan amendment. We did put out an RFQ or RFP, whatever they want to call it. We did award it last week to Landmarks. I have a meeting with them tomorrow as well to go over their timeframe. For the most part, everybody that submitted for it had a timeframe to be done by December of 18, or 19, or January of 20, so a year and a couple of months. So, that instance, you know, we're pretty quick on that aspect. So, I'll be sitting down with them. The only aspect of their, everybody's schedule that I'm going to change is I'm going to bring the ordinance to the beginning. Everybody had that at the end, so we can get this written, so downtown and the front-runner station can have that ordinance beforehand, we can start developing it, so... So, that aspect, we'll start cruising along on that, so you guys will be more involved, so...
Okay. Sounds good.
Other than that, have questions on projects that we've approved or anything?
No. I was kind of curious about the two guys that had the automobile shop, but that's already been answered.
Yep.
Okay. All righty. Well, thank you. Then I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
I move that we adjourn.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
This meeting is adjourned. Thank you.
Do you want your tape recorded?
Yeah. Okay. I hold the record for the most adjournments.
You do? You do, huh? That's something to be proud of.